Call to order, regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Fellas, your roll call.
Chairperson Bob McCool.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie. Commissioner Solis Harden here, David Harper.
Yes.
Jerry Malia.
Here.
Ben Miller.
Here.
Jason Reese. Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Whitty.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
All right, do we have any public comment on any non-agenda items? I don't see many folks here, so I'm gonna just move on. We have a consent agenda, we have minutes from September 14th and September 18th.
September 4th.
Anybody have any comments or corrections or anything on those minutes?
Could you take them one at a time?
Yes, we can do that, absolutely. So let's start with September 4th. Everybody, anybody have any changes for September 4th?
Make a motion.
All entertain a motion? All right, we have a motion from... And back in a second. And all in favor?
Upsteed.
And one upsteed. And minutes of the September 18th meeting, any changes? Entertain another motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
And motion and second? All in favor? All right, so now we're gonna continue the public hearing and adoption of a resolution approving a major final development plan amendment to allow for additional wall signs on the Medical Office Building at 3 Superior Drive, Lot 1A, Block 12, and associated parking garage at 5 Superior Drive, Lot 1B, Block 12. Anything from staff?
Yeah, I'll give a quick presentation, I'm gonna turn it over to Dan real quick just to kinda go over the procedural stuff for a continuation of a public meeting.
Sure, so I just wanted to kinda touch on a couple procedural, you know, issues, just kind of for clarification to the commission. You know, this is gonna be a continued public hearing, as you know, it would be essentially following the same procedure as a, as a public hearing by, Stephen gives a presentation, the applicant gives a presentation, and then the public gives a presentation, and there's also a period of time where, you know, the applicant can provide some kinda rebuttal or, or address any type of public comment that comes up. So at the point at which the, the board closes the public hearing, essentially the, the preference and the intent is that the questions would be addressed during, you know, the point at which the evidence is presented. The applicant come, you know, the applicant is before you and, you know, staff is also before you. If for whatever reason after the hearing is closed, you know, you need some kind of clarification, you know, on a certain point that came up to the applicant, you know, that would be appropriate for you to, to ask and get that kind of clarification. Now, if it's something that is more substantive, it is something that didn't, wasn't really addressed during the kinda evidence portion, the idea would be that you then have to open up the public hearing to get kinda more, more evidence in that respect. So I just wanted to kinda give you kind of an overview and, you know, make some kinda clarification just in case I wasn't, wasn't clear on the, on the procedure before, just for, for your own, your own purposes. You know, and then in terms of what we're looking at today, I mean, as you know, you know, the recommendation would be to approve, approve with conditions, or recommend denial at this point. This is, you know, continued public he- hearing, you know, to, to obtain more evidence, but, you know, at this point, since it's a recommendation, you know, my thinking is that it would make sense to kinda make that, that recommendation at this point, either under those three criteria. So, no, it's just kind of a, a quick overview before we, we get started.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, I'll dig in, can I give a, fellas, can you?
Yep.
Fill the blanks. Stephen Williams, Town Staff, tonight's development application concerns an amendment to the existing final development plan for the Superior Medical Office Building and the parking garage in downtown Superior. The applicant Pacific Medical Buildings is proposing an amendment to the wall signage allowances for each structure. No additional amendments to the FDP are proposed, and as we've already clarified, this is a continuation of the meeting that was started on September 18th. Let me get a little bit bigger. So the Medical Office Center is located in 3 Superior Drive, and the parking garage is addressed at 5 Superior Drive, both structures are just north of the Sports Stable in downtown Superior. The staff's memo has been updated to reflect the new proposal. The updated presentation here has just kinda been more geared to clarify the differences between the two proposals, so you'll see on the top what was previously proposed on the 18th and, and what's proposed now, along with kinda the highlights of the changes. For the Medical Office Building, there's no change in the amount of signage or the, the number of signs proposed. What is changing are the type of signs and the sizes of those signs, so previously they had a three-tiered sign system, and they were proposing a tier one at 80 square feet, that's now been reduced to 60 square feet. The tier two, that was a net new sign altogether at 50 square feet, has been eliminated, and so there's just the, kinda the tier one, and what was the tier three becoming the tier two. I'll just refer to them as the Superior Medical Center sign, which is the name of the building, and then tenant signs for, for ease of reference. So on the south elevation, we previously had the tier two sign located kinda centrally within the building. The only change from their last application is that that's now, instead of a 50-square-foot sign, that's a 35-square-foot sign, and it's been shifted in location, so it's the same size as the other existing approved signs, which is Boulder Community Health here further east, and then at the southwest corner, a future tenant sign has been approved here, they're asking for one additional one on this elevation. Facing west, previously they had two signs proposed, they still do. The Medical Center sign has been reduced in square footage again, from 80 down to 60, and then they had a tier two sign, and similar to the southwest, or the south elevation, they're now proposing just the 35-square-foot sign versus the 50-square-foot sign, and they've located this consistently on that southwest corner, and then in line with the existing tenant sign that's been approved. And then on the north elevation, they're still proposing two signs, and in this case, the locations haven't changed, they're just being reduced in size. So again, 80 square feet down to 60, and then the 50-square-foot sign down to 35. So for the parking garage, similar setup here with the proposal from the 18th and the proposal from the second, they have reduced the number of signs on each elevation by one here, and they've also similarly reduced the sizes proposed for the, the Superior Medical Center sign. So instead of 80 square feet, that's down to 60, and instead of three signs per elevation, they're proposing two additional signs in addition to the ones that are already approved. So the Boulder Community Health sign is shown here on the north elevation, and on the east elevation, two additional tenant signs are shown underneath the urgent care sign, and then the tier one sign again has been reduced to the 60 square feet. So that's my quick summary, I'll, and then as far as the resolution goes, I just reiterate that it hasn't changed. PC's options are as, as Dan outlined, to kind of approve the application as it's proposed, recommend denial, or recommend approval, I should say, recommend denial, or apply additional conditions. And then I, and part of the clarification on the procedural stuff really was just to kinda clarify that, you know, if this is kind of a back-and-forth discussion, you know, before we close the meeting, if you guys aren't content with the proposal as it is, if you wanna discuss additional conditions or changes, just hold off on closing that meeting until that conversation's had with the applicant. So I'll turn it over to Dan now.
Oh, you do? Okay. Let's see, does this work? It does.
Yeah, if you could just clearly, be, be clear about the east, east elevation.
I can go back to anything. Oh, I'm in another one? Got it. Yeah, mine, if you wanna go over it, mine also clearly shows the elevations.
Okay. We can, we can go back and forth.
Okay, cool.
Well, the narrative I have doesn't show any east eleva-, any east elevation signs on the garage, so I'm assuming that was a mistake in the narrative.
The narrative had a box that was somehow omitted from it, we updated it, I think it was yesterday morning or something, but somehow one of the...
Yeah, they...
The illustrations have always been correct, but somehow that box on the, in the narrative didn't have...
Yeah, the narrative and the verbiage didn't either, so, okay.
So, apologize for that.
All right, so I just wanna, you know, thank everyone for the opportunity to come back and, you know, present our FDP amendment.
Oh, could you use your name also?
Ben, Ben Rosenfeld, owner, HSRE Superior MOB. Owner, developer, and manager of the, of the property. So again, thank you. I hope that our amended proposal clearly shows that we took the commission, Louisville residents, and our existing providers' comments into careful consideration before we resubmitted and are presenting to you today. I also would like to reiterate that we are looking for a recommendation from the commission today. So this outlines kinda the things I wanna talk about today. First, kinda higher level, I wanna talk about the, you know, the, the healthcare impact and the wayfinding and branding, and in, in the last meeting, I, I hit on kinda the healthcare policy and business reasons for our request. However, unfortunately, last Friday, I had my first experience as a, as a consumer of healthcare. I found myself heading to an outpatient imaging center like Touchstone for an MRI. I, I tried physical therapy for six months and had noticeably improved, and I had chronic, and half chronic lower back pain caused by an acute injury when I was climbing the Grand Tetons, as I mentioned, six months ago. So last Thursday, my primary care doctor through my HMO recommended that I go to an outpatient imaging center, just like Touchstone, for an early morning MRI scan the, the next day. I had never been to this imaging center before or heard of the provider. It was very early in the morning, I was thinking about, you know, all the things that I may or may not be able to, to do again on the way there, I had it plugged into my Waze app, and it was taking me in a circuitous kinda route, and all of a sudden, I, I ran into the building kinda from, from a backdoor area, and I said, I recognized the sign, and it was a sign for the imaging center, and I immediately felt relieved. So it was very apropos and very fortuitous that, that happened, but signage really meant a lot for me as a consumer. And also, a little aside, these outpatient imaging centers, they are so much more convenient and so much cheaper than going on campus to, on a hospital campus to get a MRI. My co-pay was $100, if I had gone on campus, it would cost me thousands of dollars for the same procedure. So kinda with that, there's also this, this focus on consumer-oriented care. And that's made branding convenient, as I mentioned, and patient experiments paramount for providers when deciding on new medical office space. So for providers, each site of care represents a well-distributed strategic approach aimed at caring for the entire population. So they're starting to think of their strategy kinda like Costco or Starbucks and, and going where the growth and population is, which is really one of the reasons why they're attracted to the superior, to the superior market. Critical to that decision, however, is branding, which provides wayfinding for elderly or stressed patients. Branding's also important for peace of mind for patients in the neighborhood, that they're choosing kind of high-quality, well-known doctors, and sort of an announcement, as I mentioned last time, an announcement, you know, that they have arrived to, to the community and they're open for business. And one more kinda high-level healthcare impact and how it impacts our, our request is, you know, the Affordable Care Act has, has caused massive consolidation resulting in independent groups like, like Cornerstone and Touchstone that have cloud and that have, that are large size, focusing really on branding affiliations and partnering with each other, kinda like how, you know, they're partners in the, in the Sports Stable, Cornerstone is, and that really helps them thrive in this new environment. So are the universe of tenants that we could potentially lease to, of single physician and two physician groups are limited and, and really diminishing, especially in new facilities like the Superior Medical Center that requires providers like these folks that already did to, to come out of pocket and pay for a large part of the upfront build-out of the tenant improvements, that can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, and, you know, what is rewarding that investment, these type of groups also expect recognition and they expect signage, and, and they expect it because their patients expect it and because they're making, and they wanna be recognized for making such a large, long-term investment in the community. So one thing I wanna talk about is the direct kinda gearing away from the high-level trends, I wanna talk about our meeting and the operational improvements that we have made since our last meeting. So we have, and Stephen did a really good job of outlining it, but I just wanna restate it, so one thing that we did that actually Stephen didn't mention is that we are saying that all current and future building and parking structure signs will observe illumination, limiting the hours, limited to the hours of business, and going dark 30 minutes after the close of business. So this is a change, and we, and we effectuated this change by on September 20th, we talked to our, our operator of the urgent care, BCH, and told them that we recommend that we should turn off the signs at 9:30, and they agreed, even though that they're currently permitted to be illuminated indefinitely. And then just to reiterate again, all future illuminated signs will likely be turned off by 8:00 PM based on the more standard business hours of the balance of the, of the tenancy. So we also made some design improvements based on our conversation a couple weeks ago. We reduced the tier one signs from 80 feet to 60 feet, we reduced the size of all tier two signs from 50 to 35 square feet, which is the approved square footage for all existing building signs, and we reduced the number of, of parking structure signs by two, one on each elevation. And then also, you know, we changed the location of the building signs to be more in that hard corner to act as, you know, to, to be better for wayfinding and to be more of an effective sign, which is something that we heard. So, you know, I can talk about this project as, as owners forever and, and the healthcare reasons why and, and the business reasons why, but I figured, you know, one of the, the main reasons why we need to do this and why I'm up here is our users want it, and so I'm gonna turn this over to Touchstone and Cornerstone, whomever would like to, to come up first. Have at it.
Good evening, my name is Sherry Coys, and I'm the manager for Touchstone Imaging Superior at 3 Superior Drive, Suite 150 in Superior. Thank you again for allowing us to continue this discussion of signage. I really appreciate the fact that you're open to hearing more proposals, more ideas on our behalf. So with Touchstone as a community, we call ourselves a community 'cause that's what we are, we're a healthcare community partnered in with, with Cornerstone, and we're offering a peace of mind that only comes with healthcare by being in this community. Allow me to elaborate on our signage request by focusing on a foundation of Touchstone and also our partner of Cornerstone. So as a part of healthcare community, we know how important peace of mind, of course, comes for those who are in pain, scared, worried about a life-changing event. Imagine if you will, you're driving your mother or father to an imaging location to rule out the possibility of a life-changing illness. For many of our patients, this is their reality, it's not, I guess, it's a reality. As they are scared for what may await, they're trying desperately to find that location that will help move their family forward, good news or bad news. In the distance, you find your location by way of a well-placed sign, not from GPS, not from the internet, but a well-placed sign. While worried about the outcome, you still have that nice sense of calm, a little calm, knowing that your answers are within sight. Our signage represents hope, answers, and peace of mind. Our signage represents help to our sick and injured patients.
My name is Andrew Castro. Should I give my home address? Yes, sir. Okay. One of the, I'm one of the physicians at Cornerstone with PDX. I appreciate the commission for letting us have this opportunity to speak. So this development has been kinda the dream of ours, having a health and wellness destination practice, pairing up with the Sports Stable and Impact Sports, and I understand that this is a pretty big development for the town of Superior as well. We are very busy in our group, and fairly regularly, we'll get patients that are a little bit older, aren't from the community. By being a pretty big practice and a pretty big anchor here for our destination practice, we do have a lot of people coming from elsewhere, other, other cities that come to our group and our practice from elsewhere. I think that just practically, one point is, when we see elderly patients or a little bit older, or even folks who don't live and live here, you know, the first time you go south on McCaslin and cross the, coming from 36 and cross the bridge going the wrong way, that's, you know, kind of a learning thing, and they get a little bit discombobulated, honestly, and, and having a signage for us would be just practically really helpful. Going into, you know, we bring folks in from all of the city, all of the state, to, to the area, where a lot of the, most of the guys are team doctors, we see in college athletes, high school athletes, and folks from many communities, and we take them here, and they're here and they're spending their money here, and, you know, it helps us have a business. I look around as the development goes on in this area, and I really don't see any sign, any businesses that don't have signs on them, day and night, hotels, whatnot. Part of the development, I don't know if we can go back to some of the maps, the overview map, but part of this development is, is our group and our bill, our bearings that are presently up, but that's really only a small portion of what's to come, and I would argue that there's gonna be considerably more lighting, considerably more parking structures with, that need lights and other buildings that are, are actually to come, and perhaps even the town of Superior's gonna have some, some presence over there, and so our stuff is only just part of it, so I don't know that these lights are gonna, in relation to the rest of it, are gonna be, yeah, that one, a very small portion of, some of the views we're talking about were here, and all of this is to be developed. Now, I noticed that there was some town of Louisville residents, and I wanna certainly, we all wanna be respectful for them, I, I didn't notice any town of Superior residents here that night, there was a, I think when we, this, this development was that innocent inception, there were some folks on the, on the margins of the property that didn't like it and are apparently okay with it now and not complaining, so it's interesting that there's not many of people from the town of Superior, which I'm, I'm, would imagine are wholeheartedly supporting this, this major development and really boon to the local economy, they're not complaining. So, anyway, what else can I add? We appreciate your willingness to listen, we think a signage for us is really critical for our, our business, our business development, our partnerships with the city and the other vendors in the, in the, in the building. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for adding to that. So something else that came up at our last meeting was the, the CDOT inquiry, which we think is a really good idea. So we, we called and emailed and have not received kinda definitive feedback on their availability as it applies to the Superior Medical Center. In terms of, there's two types of signs, there's the logo sign, and then I forget the other acronym, more for like places of interest, such as colleges or landmarks or things like that. So we'd be looking for a logo sign, and they're, they're valuable, you see them a lot of times for these type of retail establishments. The one downfall with them is that, you know, kinda once you get to the exit, then what do you do? It doesn't, it doesn't orient you left or orient you right, so we think that they could be a good supplement, but it, it doesn't replace the effectiveness of, of building signage. So a couple things, just to, you know, be clear, so we are not, so this is the unchanged proposal. So we are proposing to have backlit signs, which is the current standard for the entire downtown Superior master plan, the Floyd sign is backlit, all the other signs that are planned and that are currently up are backlit. That being said, we, you know, the size of the SMC sign, we are, and because it's not our, our main tenant and it's more meant to help orient during the day, we are proposing to downlight that sign, and really, to be honest, out of respect for the, for the Louisville residents. And then one other thing I just wanna hit on, and I think our, our providers in the building have hit on it, but in terms of the, the universe of the types of signs, I mean, we're dealing with and, and working with, and the tenants in our building are the highest quality providers in the area. I mean, they're essential health providers, they're providing ambulatory patient services, rehab, pediatric care, primary care, lab, they're not, you know, John's Hair Removal. So, I mean, the, the type of providers that we're, we're trying to recruit to fill the balance of our space as well as our existing providers are high-quality and we think represents the brand of, of the town of Superior. So one other thing I wanted to just really hit on the illumination, 'cause I think we had some confusion in our last meeting, so we are, so this slide is meant to help you understand kinda the entire universe or potential for the, for the lit signs to impact views or to be effective in darkness. So as you can see, late fall and winter months, illumination start at kinda 4:30 PM and they'll remain lit until 8:00 PM, and that'll apply to everyone but the urgent care. You know, the summer months, we won't need it as much because it stays dark out, you know, until 8:00, 8:30. And then kinda, so in summary, to quantify that, is we're seeking approval for approximately three and a half hours of illumination during early evening and dinner hours for, for most the year, and then, or sorry, excuse me, and then approximately of four out of the 12 months, we're asking for evening illumination, that's being in the season that's, that's coming up. So here's a quick outline of the current tenant signage as it stands, so our tenants are BCH, Touchstone Medical Imaging and Cornerstone. As you can see, Touchstone and Cornerstone do not have signs, BCH, who operates the urgent care, does have sign. We are talking to an undisclosed healthcare system, and they are interested in taking an entire floor and are interested just as much as these guys are in, in signage. And then the one thing I also wanna look here is, is the commitment, the term of lease that, that these guys are making to, to the community. It's a significant investment, both in rent and in tenant improvement dollars, as I mentioned earlier. And then here's the, here's the signage chart, this is reiterating what we proposed. Rather than focus on this chart, which Stephen did a good job of going through, I figured we should just look at the, kinda the renderings. So here's the west and south elevation, I'm calling this the kinda hard corner of our project, we're proposing three, these two are approved, so we're proposing one additional, calling a tier two sign now, so these are all the same size, and then two on, on the other end, and then one Superior Medical Center sign as well. And then here's kinda how it relates to the plan view, so here's the west elevation is, is this portion of the MOB, and the south elevation, which Stephen went through, is kinda this phase along the parking structure here. And then you have Impact Sports is right here, if you're following this rendering, the line of it. So here's the north and west elevation, so we saw the west elevation on the last slide, however, here is the north elevation, so we are proposing one tier two sign and then one SMC sign, as well as the Superior Medical Center sign, which I mentioned on the last slide. And here's the north elevation and plan view, and that's, that side, and you're following, you're following along here, there's the west elevation is that side. There's the west elevation is that side. So, I really wish that we had a better photo of this because the garage looks nothing like this now, but this is the best photo I had that I could put on there. And so, here's kind of what it would look like in terms of what is already there, which is this urgent care sign. So, we'd be adding these three signs. One of them's the Superior Medical Center sign. So, really, we're adding two tenant signs on the east elevation, as shown in plan and in the photorealistic interpretation over here. And then, on the north elevation, same concept. This is an approved sign. This is where our SMC would go. This sign is already up, the BCH sign, and so, we're asking for two more signs on this elevation. And that would be for, Cornerstone would go there or on the other side and then there'd be two spots up to over for, one would be for the undisclosed healthcare system and then one would be for another large floor plate user who we hope to attract. Would love to have a surgery center in there if we could figure that out, but no, looking for large floor plate users, just like the ones that we have now. And then, I also wanted to show, I thought this comp was good. This is a multi-tenant building like ours with significant signage, probably more in terms of square footage on the face, not as many, but in a, you know, off of the I-70. This is near Vail. This is across the street from Beaver Creek. And, yeah, it's a multi-tenant building done for Centura Health, who's a, you know, well-known provider in the area. And it's on I-70. There's residential homes around it. This is a good comp for, as you can see, it has large block lettering here that takes up, you know, most of this face. So, it was effective in, you know, providing wayfinding for tenants and these are all backlit as well. And I believe that they're, at least the emergency sign is illuminated indefinitely. I mean, obviously, because it's an emergency, but this is Buck Creek. So, that is the end of my presentation. I get, thank you for your time and again, we are looking for a recommendation today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions for the applicant at this point?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate you taking our comments from two weeks ago into consideration. So, a couple of things, you said that I think Boulder Community Hospital was agreeable to a 9:30. Why 9:30? Why not earlier? And is that going to be amendment to their lease? Will that be in writing?
No, it's not currently listed in their lease in terms of times. And the reason why 9:30 is because the urgent care closes for business at 9:00. So, it's 30 minutes after they close.
Got it, okay.
How bright will these lights be?
Say it again.
Sorry. How bright will the lights that you're proposing, or the signs that you're proposing be?
I mean, I, so this is Bill Smith. He's our architect and designer. I'm not an expert in that. I'll say not very bright, but.
Bill Smith, intergroup architects, 2000 West Littleton Boulevard. Lighting is very difficult to put a number on. It's going to be this color of the sign. You know, the darker colors aren't as bright. Urgent care is really white, but it's not going to be as bright as the Floyd Barber Shop sign when I drove away last time. But that's kind of a, and I think you're talking about the internally illuminated or backlit signs.
Correct.
Yeah, that's kind, it's really going to depend a lot on the coloration of that signage. Again, urgent care is white, so it's going to be, it's intense. But as I look at Touchstone, which is a green and a blue, and Cornerstone, which is a tan, it's not going to be as bright.
The reason I ask this question is that I actually went over to Coal Creek Circle, which is quite close to where the residents in Louisville live, so I could see what they're actually talking about. And while most of the lights that they're looking at are actually in the garage, the brightest lights are, the brightest lights are the urgent care lights and of course, the Floyd's Barber Shop light. I would not like to, I mean, any additional lights that go up. But if you go north, actually, or west, really, to the next building up 36, which I'll describe as the Superior Liquor Building, they have three lights, one for, what's the pizza place?
Old Chicago.
Old Chicago. One for a company called Envision and one for Superior Liquor. The old Chicago one is a sort of off-white that you can see perfectly clearly, but it's not, doesn't glare. The Envision one is like the urgent care center and the Florida one and the Superior Liquor one is red. And I mean, I really have considerable sympathy for the Louisville residents on the urgent care sign being as bright as it is because it's very visible.
Right. So, I guess the one other thing I'd add is each sign goes and gets permitted as well after, so there's.
Stephen, do we have a measurement for, I mean, that's one of my questions too, is, you know, what these signs actually look like, right? We can control the brightness? Is the brightness fixed once they're done? Do you have a way of measuring that? I mean, how do, you know?
Lighting is tricky, so we don't have a lighting, like a photometric requirement as we would for just like normal wall fixtures. But in essence, like a light would actually have to meet our lighting requirements. A lighted sign would have to meet our lighting requirements as well. But we don't, you know, before it goes up, there's no requirement that they give us a photometric plan, which is an engineered drawing that shows, you know, how bright that light's going to cast off the property line or whether or not it does. So, the real intent of the lighting requirements is that the light does not cast, you know, beyond the property line. And that's something that's, I guess, a little fuzzy in the application of signs because it's really geared towards lights. But we have worked with, I guess the short of it is, we have worked with applicants and if there's a concern about the urgent care sign, I think we could try to go back and, you know, revisit, you know, the wattage of their bulbs or just even in the count. So, sometimes you can just, you know, eliminate a third of their bulbs or a quarter of their bulbs and then it just dims because of the amount of, you know. So, wattage in and of itself isn't something, like I actually did find that the marketplace has a wattage limitation, but if you have 160-watt light bulbs, you're going to still have quite a glare. So, it's a tough thing to kind of get your arms around. And we don't have anything for the downtown Superior.
And what's your willingness to work with the town on changing that if they go up and we're like, holy crap, this is nuts? And, I mean, I'm sure you would too, right? I mean, you get these signs up and they're just glaring bright. It's not necessary.
Yeah.
Can we write that in? Can we do something with that, that we can work with you to bring this down to a, I mean, you want people driving up 36 to see it at night. That's the goal, right? You're not looking to broadcast it to Brookfield, right?
So, yeah, and I'll just say, based on our experience working with planning and building, I mean, we'll work with them to do what's right.
Along those lines, as I was leaving last, two weeks ago, I went by the children's hospital that's at, what I'm going to say, 120th and 36. And you are correct, the child, the child is in white and is very bright, but the balloons, which are, I think they're blue and yellow and red, aren't as bright. So, I think that's a, that's something that I believe that they would be willing to look at, to say, hey, maybe we can tone this down or, you know, maybe it's a blue, a light blue or a dark blue. But something that's complementary, that it's not just bright white.
And are we looking at, I mean, I don't see this much anymore, but right, you can have a rectangle that's completely lit with the signage and the whole thing's lit versus just the letters of the.
We don't allow cabinet signs in downtown.
Okay, so it'll just be, yeah, okay, cool.
I actually have a question about the traffic on 36 because while I was overlooking at the garage, I noticed that there was a lot of traffic on 36. And so, I thought, well, I'll go back and see what it looks like from the road at night. So, I drove from McCaslin down to the mall and then back again and thought, I made it quite safely, that's why I'm here. But, I mean, what I noticed is that any time you spend looking at your signs, you're not focusing on the road. And when you're driving 70 miles an hour, which is basically what the speed on that piece of road is after dark, in the dark, I mean, I think you could argue that people should be paying, putting all their attention on the road, not looking at your signs. I mean, have you considered the impact of your signs on the traffic there?
Yeah, absolutely. And we haven't done an analysis, a detailed analysis, but I think by proposing to shut them off, you know, at 9:30 at the latest sign and at 8 o'clock where they, is a, you know, huge concession and sign of good faith that we're trying to provide what's right for the project and community and not, I mean, these aren't neon signs. These aren't, they're in the context of the building. I mean, these are very appropriate signs that are meant for wayfinding and branding.
I mean, I think, I mean, I read Dr. Sin's letter and I quite agree that we should do everything we can to promote that. I mean, all the businesses in downtown, particularly the ones that are already there. So, I mean, I take your points about wayfinding and the difficulty of people getting there. And I'm not sure, I think it's really due to the fact that you don't have signs on the building. I mean, mostly, as the food signs, you show, I mean, people need to know what exit to get off. At the moment, if you go to the roundabout, you'll find that there's a sign there for Colorado Retina Associates, which is, which you can't get to at the moment because of the roadworks on.
Who coincidentally aren't even located in downtown Superior. They're up the road at the Discovery Building.
They're in the Discovery Building, but they have those signs there because you can't get to the Discovery Building at the moment because of McCaslin. So, I mean, have you spoken to the town about putting signs at the roundabout to direct people there? Because I must admit, I don't want to drive quarter of a mile across a building site just to see if there's somebody in an office building at the end of it. Have you spoken to the town about putting signs on the roundabout or along McCaslin to help people find them?
There's a, kind of general downtown Superior signage plan that's being processed now with the master developer that will help with that.
Any questions?
For me, I want to first say thank you, Mr. Rosenfeld, for coming back with a plan and a proposal that kind of better fits the design standards for our town. One of the questions that I had, though, was regarding the hours of illumination and how those differ in the season. And if you wouldn't mind going back and give me some clarification on that, because it seems to me that one half hour before opening and one half hour after closing should be pretty standard regardless of time of year. So, can you say something to that?
It is, it's just, it's when it gets, when it gets, I mean, they're only turned on when it gets darker. So, we won't illuminate them unless it gets dark and it gets darker earlier, kind of starting now until the beginning of next year. So, it's more a point about like how late they're illuminated.
And do we have definitions of when that is? Do we use dawn and dusk? How do we?
Well, and I guess I'd also clarify that the way that this recent little was couched was that they are not interested in the morning hours. They're just interested in the evening hours. Is that correct? So, it says 4:30 PM or whenever it actually becomes dusk, but they're not doing, they're not proposing half an hour before business opens. Is that correct?
So, are you saying a time or you?
They're just saying dusk, essentially, and it changes. And I think the point of the slide was just to illustrate that it changes. It'll become as early as like 4:00, 4:30 during, you know, December, January. And for the summer months, it'll be, you know, 7:00 to 9:00 or something, so.
Well, it may not even be, may not even be very lit in June, right? So.
Yeah, but my question is, is that relevant? Because the signs will come on. If they can be illuminated during the day, so be it. So, when dusk comes at 4:30 or dusk is at 8:00, should it really matter when the signs are on?
Well, they won't come on during the day is what they're saying, which I think is also, and I don't think we need neon signs blasting during the day. He's saying the signs aren't going to come on during the day. They're going to come on at dusk till they get shut off. They'll be off during the day.
Well, and I understand that and I'm not saying that either. I'm just saying there's, for continuity and for clarification for when the signs can be lit or lighted, shouldn't it be kind of a standard time across the board?
And the real standard is just that they turned off 30 minutes within business closing. And so, because he doesn't have all his tenants in, he doesn't know all the hours of operation, he's kind of, you know, estimated that it'll be as, the latest would be 8 o'clock for a new tenant, but it could be earlier. So.
Okay, I'm still not very clear on that, but I guess we'll look at that. I'm just wondering, there's, when you add those numbers and the times, there's some ambiguity there that I'm just trying to get clarification on, that's all.
Well, there's variance, I guess. And instead of having like four signs out on the, you know, the eastern facade of the garage that are lit till 9:30, you know, because that's the latest hours of operation for the urgent care, the other signs, Touchstone, Cornerstone, will correspond with their business hours. So, if they close at 6:00, their signs will be off at 6:30. If they close at 7:00, those signs will be off at, so rather than, I think he's trying to limit the impact as much as possible. So, there is variance and there is inconsistency, but it's, the objective is to limit the amount of lit signs for as much as we can.
And I guess that's one of the ways to kind of address our concern for light pollution as well. So, I'm clear.
Do you have anything?
Yes, one of the comments in our recently adopted design guidelines for downtown Superior says that interior lighting for parking structures will be concealed and shall not be visible from outside the parking structure. That's clearly not the case with the existing parking structure. Is there anything you can do to move the parking structure more in that direction?
So, the, for safety reasons, the parking structures need to be lit at all times for reasons that I don't need to get into here. However, they are shielded, so that was actually a point of issue during the entitlement was to raise the screen to block parking lights so the neighbors are not actually getting parking lights shooting across the freeway. So, it's lit to a standard and we did everything we could in design, from a design standard, to limit the impact of the light.
And that was permitted in the.
So, it's the source that gets shielded, so the, you know, the spray, you can't shield all the way to the ground, of course, so, I mean, yeah, that's, and when, I think they first went up, they didn't have the shields on, so that's the one thing that I did hear from Louisville residents prior to this application about, was the parking garage lighting. And before, you know, we alerted the building department and they worked with the applicant during, or the contractor during construction in order to get those shields added, so.
So, it's shielding the source, not the.
Shielding the source, correct, yeah. And the spray as much as it can.
Any other questions for? We have time for public comment. If there's anybody from the audience who would like to speak to this, I'll entertain a public comment now. If you could just give us your name and your address, that would be great.
Thank you very much. I'm Patrick Houston, 1029 Turnberry Circle on the other side of 36. Well, I've been in healthcare for over 40 years and I've seen a lot of lights there and there and whatever, but what people need to see is the lights on the south side, the face of the building, so they can see it when they're coming in here. 36? Some recognition, absolutely. But, you know, to the brightness that they're proposing and the number of signs, no. I've driven around there, what, five times since our last meeting. I've driven around there, what, five times since our last meeting. I've never seen anybody in the parking garage after 6 o'clock. You know, more light pollution. And if, as I drove in, in the later hours, I saw nothing of signage for the practices that are in the building. So, I'm a little surprised that they don't want to have it front-facing where people can drive in and say, oh yeah, there's the medical building, there's doctor so-and-so, there's the imagery. So, I'm a little lost on that spot. And last time, a gentleman mentioned that, well, we've developed all these medical buildings in Southern California. Well, I'm sorry, California is really not a good word, Colorado in general. I heard it was Texas before that, but we want to keep quiet, small community look, is what I gathered from all your questions. And Mr. Harper, I really appreciate that you stepped out and looked around to see what the view from the other side was and why so many of our other residents came over to the last meeting to speak their concerns. And thank you very much. I'm sure I'll attend the council meeting where it goes from the planning meeting to the council. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Anyone else have public comments?
Cherry Coys Touchstone Imaging, 3 Superior Drive, Suite 150 Superior. Just to discuss a little bit about the parking garage, the parking garage is used by the sports stable as well, so on the side of safety, yes, it's not only utilized by us, it's allowed to be utilized by the sports stable folks as well. I have worked there late in the evenings, not every night, but I do have staff and I have had members stay there till after 9:30 at night. To be able to walk out into a lit parking garage being a girl, being female, is definitely a very peaceful, settling feeling of safety. Lots of crazy things are happening in this world, Superior's a beautiful place, but it could happen. As far as the concerns of our Louisville community, they are very valued and we thank you for them. They are important enough to bring this community and members together to discuss. Our desire is to award all patients with an opportunity to quickly and easily identify location of care during their time of need. That may be coming down 36, that may be coming from the north area of Louisville, that could be coming from Evergreen or out of the mountains somewhere. We need to have that opportunity to allow our patients that signage, that peace of mind, that identity for the community and for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Again, Bill Smith with Intergroup Architects, and I just kind of want to hit on a couple of items. The signage that we're proposing on the building is not wayfinding. It is more as I'm driving down 36 and I see urgent care out of the corner of my eye. I'm not driving in my car going, oh, I've cut my wrist, I've got to go find someplace to go. It's for the future, so that when my child or my adult parents need an urgent care, that I know where to go. So, it's not really for wayfinding as we're talking about, it's more of a destination identification. It will help us as we're driving to see cornerstone or touchstone or the future, or the future tenant that's going to be there, but it's more as I'm driving down 36 at 70 miles an hour, I'm, I'm making a note of it, just like Old Chicago. I'm not driving down looking for a place to eat and then I see Old Chicago, I got to drive a mile to turn around and come back. It's, I make a mental picture of it and so in the future, when I go there, I know where to go. So, it's really not wayfinding that we're asking for, it's identification so that once I have arrived, one, I know it's there, but once I arrive, yeah, I know where it is, but I've already scoped that out. If I don't know that imaging is in 3 Superior Drive because I drove by, I'm not even going to think about it. So, that's why, that's one of the differentiations that I wanted to make clear is, we're not asking for wayfinding, it's more for identification.
And any other public comment?
Andrew Castro, address 3 Superior. Right.
You don't know it.
Yeah, I can't find it. So, I just want to reiterate, yeah, we, I guess, you know, in concept, it's some of an impasse of full signage and no signage. I really don't think our, what we're proposing is that, this is really a nice compromise. I don't go out in my yard and look out at 6 o'clock in the morning, get ready to drive to work. And we don't want to be, we work a lot, I want to be home as much as I can. And so, we're compromising, I think graciously about allowing it to be shut down 30 minutes after, so the evening hours would be open, I just might reiterate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Alfred, do you have any response, anything that's come up or mentioned in public comment?
No.
Okay. No other questions, I'm leaning towards closing the public hearing at this point for discussion.
I don't have any questions, I just have some comments. Fundamentally, in my opinion, this goes back to the light pollution and disrupting our neighbors in Louisville. And from our last meeting to this meeting, I'd have to applaud Mr. Rosenfeld and the orthopedic group and the imaging center. We're, we're trying to reach an agreement here. You've given some, we've given you some instructions from the last meeting, you've come back with, with a toned-down signage plan. It's, it's not a zero signage plan, which I'm sure the residents in Louisville would appreciate, but I think it's, it's pretty darn good for what we can expect for what that is. It's big businesses, it's a big building, you need, you need the signage, you need, whether it's wayfinding or, you know, just the recognition of the logo, driving down the highway. I think reducing the size is a key point, turning them off at a reasonable hour is a key point. And you've, you heard us from the last time and you went back and redid it and came back, so I applaud you. Thank you.
All right, if there aren't any further questions or discussions, we think we need to have the applicant. We can close the public hearing and start discussion. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. All right, public hearing's closed. So, I haven't said anything, I was sort of waiting for the public hearing to be closed, but I, I'd like to respond to some things that I heard, probably more than anything. I don't, I don't think we have any interest in preventing necessary signage. I think our, our biggest issue has been the lighting and the impact on current and future residents, and Superior residents aren't here because right now Superior residents aren't impacted. Superior residents will be impacted because we're building a lot of residential in that area, and I think we need to be cognizant of what, what's coming forward. We already know of a development that's been approved, we have others that are already on the table that, you know, they're going to see the signage, right? So, I think, just to respond to those, those comments and then including our neighbors in Louisville and just being responsible and thoughtful about what we're, we're subjecting them to. And so, if, if it were to have come forward with no, no backlit signs, even downlit signs, I probably would have approved it last time, you know, or if there was no lights, I probably would have approved it last time, right? It's, it's that light, it's that, it's that pollution, it's that sitting on your back deck and, you know, I'm, I'm not looking forward to being three blocks here, I, I know I'm going to see that big sign that's going to go up in the front, I know it, and I know it'll be on my backyard, and that thing's going to be just blasting light. And so, I think we all have to be thoughtful about what we're permitting in this area, not just for, for Superior Medical Center, but going forward, you know, and what precedent are we going to set and, you know, what, how bright are these going to be and who's going to be impacted and how we're going to think about it, so. So, anyway, those, that's, those are my general, general thoughts, and I do really appreciate what's come back. You did hear us, you listened to us, I didn't expect you to come back and not have any lit signs, as awesome as I think that would have been and as much as Louisville would have loved it, I do appreciate the fact that you came back with fewer signs, smaller signage. Would like to address the, the brightness of those signs and maybe look at getting something written in that allows us to, you know, if they need to reduce the wattage, that we have some flexibility to work with them to make sure that, that these signs aren't too horrible to have glaring when you're sitting on your back deck, you know. I mean, folks live on the golf course, right? I know it's not Superior, they're our neighbors, though, and actually, you know, I mean, there's, there's agreements for Louisville in this property as well, they don't really have much say, but, you know, they're, they're, they're impacted by this, they'll likely shop this area, you know, and if I were sitting on my back deck back there, I'd, I'd appreciate us being thoughtful about, you know, the type of signage we have, so. That's kind of where I'm at, at the moment. Everybody else have any discussion about-
Commissioner McCool, to your point, you know, if that Floyd's barber sign had come across our desk, which it did not, would we have approved that?
Yeah, probably not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have.
I think we'd have a big problem with that sign.
Yeah, it's a very bright sign.
Just, that to your point.
Yep.
I'll give just a couple thoughts. So, I, I really like the south and west elevations that you presented, because again, as I drive over there and I've driven over there again since our last meeting, that is where people are going to drive down to find out where they're going. And so, I think, to me, the, those signs, the future tenant signs makes so much sense on that corner of the building, on both sides of that, I think they should have been there to begin with, but so, so I think that makes sense. What I still struggle with is the signs on the highway.
On the east side.
The east and the north side, because I don't, to the points that I think have been made before, driving down the highway, I'm not looking for an imaging center. I, if I need an imaging center, my doctor's going to tell me where to go, and he's going to say, go to the Superior Medical Center. And I think we, as a town, want people to say, go to the Superior Medical Center, not, that would be preferential because now we're promoting Superior. And, and I think that, again, I, I don't know, but I'm sure you're going to say, we're in the Superior Medical Center. Hopefully, we get that branding done in the community so that people know the Superior Medical Center, and I think the signs on the building for Superior Medical Center are great. I was okay with the bigger ones, you know, even the 80-foot, but I liked the 60-foot better, but I could have been okay with that, too. So, I like the branding of the center as a Superior Medical Center. Again, all the people you put up there as tenants, I'm not going to drive down the highway and try to find someone like that. I'm not going to find cornerstone, I'm not going to find any of that. I am going to find them by looking in my map, on my phone, and that's how people do it. And I know you said maybe some people don't, and my 85-year-old dad doesn't do it, but do you know what? I drive him there, or my sister drives him there, he doesn't drive there. So, again, when, when I think about this, I just, I think the tenant signage that faces US 36, I'm still not in favor of that, but I like, I like the rest of it, so.
I'll echo those comments, I've been kind of- I'll echo those comments. I was kind of trying to think about what precedent we're setting and what precedent's been set in surrounding communities, and I was struck when I had to ride to work one morning very early in the dark and rode past Flatiron Mall and past Interlochen to get to the airport in Bloomfield. And I don't recall seeing a single lit sign on my entire commute, so I called the Bloomfield planning department and said, what's, what do you allow in Interlochen? And they said, well, we allow tenant signs on buildings, but not on, not on any parking garages or any other off-site things, with the exception of Oracle, which was their biggest employer they had ever landed. She didn't recall at the time about whether internally lit signs were allowed or not, I just didn't recall seeing any in the morning, anyway. Here in Superior, the Superior liquor building, as we'll call it, those signs are lit, but they're on the building where the tenants are. There's no parking garage that is conveniently right next to the highway and can provide a, a better billboard. Same way across 36, I think, in Louisville, you do see some lit signs, they're actually on the buildings where the tenants are.
And they're on the first story.
Yeah. Top of the first story. Yeah. So, I just, this is kind of a unique circumstance where we actually have this off-site garage that is a convenient, very good advertising venue, but it's not really in keeping with what else has been done along the corridor from what I could tell in a limited time I had to look at this. I totally get the signs on actually on the tenant building itself, and same thing with comments from Commissioner White. Like, I think I get there via phone, I think most people would navigate via phone. This is a long-term decision, 30 or 40 years from now, what we adopt into this FDP is still going to be there, but I don't think, you know, I think people will be having a driverless car taking them to the doorstep of the building, so I don't, not sure wayfinding will be an issue. That's where I'm at.
So, for me, I, again, want to reiterate that, I think that the applicant came back with a proposal that is closer to meeting our design standards for signage in our town and that, you know, I want to respect that. I, I also understand the need for the signage and branding for the tenants of this building, and, you know, that is, that is a huge need. And so, as a business owner myself, I want as much exposure as I can get on the building or on the, I mean, I, I want an airplane flying around that has my sign connected to it so that, you know, people can, can see that where I am and where they need to go to get my services. And I said this last time that we met, is that I, at that, at that meeting, I wanted to find a way to support this applicant and get that signage, and I was really trying hard to. But for me, what turned me against moving forward with that proposal was the sheer number of signs that were being proposed. And I think that we're talking about a pretty substantial reduction in the number of signs that are being proposed here, so I really do see that as, you know, and I don't want to call it a compromise necessarily, but I, I see it as a win-win for both us and for the applicant. So, my thoughts at this point would be to go ahead and move forward with this application and support what the applicant's doing as well as the tenants that are being brought in, into our town and into our downtown. So, that's kind of where I'm at. This, this proposal feels a lot better for me than what we saw previously, and, you know, I'm feeling like, again, I'm kind of being redundant here, but it better meets our guideline standards.
You're mentioning design standards, I mean, they, I mean, the design standards allow them to have the current signage that's permitted now, what they're requesting is to exceed those design standards, and they've come back, they're still requesting to exceed the design standards that, you know, that they've been permitted, and, and, I mean, I want to be clear to the public, too, the, what they're requesting does not meet our design standards, it exceeds our design standards, is that accurate? I just want to be sure we're really-
It's accurate.
Okay. And, and so, the, I mean, they, they have signage that they're permitted to do now, they're just requesting additional signage outside of our design standards, and I just wanted to make sure everybody is clear on that.
So, I do understand that this is a variance. When I'm talking about design standards, I'm talking more about the size and the illumination of the signs that are being proposed. In fact, I think that we're kind of in uncharted territory here with this building because we haven't had any applicants request anything like this previously. Also, there is really not a precedent or a standard for approving or disallowing these kind of signs. So, I think that, you know, based on that, moving forward with this kind of fits with what I'm referring to as design standards.
No, I just have a few comments. I think that the, what they've come back with is a good plan, they've reduced the signs, and I really don't have any problems with that. I think they absolutely need signage. I've been over there and people are saying, I can't find you, and I'm, I'm okay with what they've proposed.
I'm comfortable with the signs that are going on the medical office building.
I think it's been-
I'm sorry, you just said, "No, it's..." I'm comfortable with the signs that are going on the medical office building. I do recognize that this is the first 60,000 square feet of 360,000 square feet that I think is going to be the total office space in the new downtown Superior. So, I mean, since we don't have, as Commissioner Stewart was saying, a real standard for what signs on offices were supposed to be like, I think we're going to have to take them one at a time, and, I mean, I would be willing to defend our decision on that if we were trying to deny another tenant or another prospective developer additional signs. I mean, I don't, I think we could argue that this is not permission to put tenant signs all over every office building that ever gets built in downtown Superior. I think the Superior Medical Center sign on the west side of the north face of the garage is helpful. People will see that. I think the existing urgent care medical sign that faces Superior is helpful. I think if you had an urgent care sign where the Boulder Community Health sign on the north side of that faces at the moment, that would be better than Boulder Community Health, but I don't mind having Boulder Community Health there either. I would like the sign, the urgent care sign, the light, I mean, if that could be made less glaring, I think that would be helpful. I don't like the idea of adding the tenant signs on the north and east faces of the building. I don't think they really add a lot for the, for the tenants. I agree with Commissioner Witt on that. They're just additional light, if you like, their additional distraction for the motorists driving up and down 36.
And I, I mean, I agree that signage is necessary. I mean, my issue is less about signage and less about the lighting, and more about the lighting, and that's, that's my concern. So the east, the east elevation lit signs, I mean, still have me concerned. My sense is we, we probably approve this with some conditions and some comments and express what our concerns are to the board of trustees and, you know, let them take it. Not sure, I'm, I'm hearing from at least four or five of us at the east elevation, one, two, three, maybe four. Where were you on the east lit signs? Were you okay with those or those concerning to you?
The east lit signs that face more so toward Louisville and 36.
Yeah.
Right. I, I'm not a big fan of them, but the applicant heard our discussion from last time and reduced their size. I believe he took one out, so there's one less.
Yeah.
It's a compromise.
Yeah. Well, I'm also...
That's, that's pretty good.
Yeah. Well, if they can be kept in hand, and, I mean, I'd like written in that they, that they, that they come on at dusk and they're off at closing time, so that three years from now, somebody doesn't come along and decide to leave them on and come back here and say the PD permitted, you know, that they're, that they're allowed to do that, right? So we may need to talk with the staff and the attorney about how we get that language clarified. I'd also like to get in there that if they are too bright, you know, that we have some recourse to lower the wattage or, you know, and, and that needs to be able to come from the people who are staring at them, whether that's, yeah, thank you, me, whether that's the, whether that's the...
It's lighting.
Right. I, I, you know, the last thing I want to hear from the new residents to the, to the south, is that, yeah, that. I don't want to hear people saying, "Well, they knew that when they moved in," you know, like, no. We're sitting here paying attention now. This is a, this is, this is a development, and they need to have some recourse if, you know, if it's just too much. Want to be able to have the ability to respond if there's a problem, right?
That's a good question for, for staff and our attorney. How would we do that? We need to put a provision in there, a recommendation to the board of trustees.
Right. I mean, you could...
In the future, what's the study called, Stephen?
Photometric Plan or?
Photometric Plan. We've seen those, like, the last one we saw, I remember, is for the Ethan Allen Building, of how the light sheds from the building.
Correct. I mean, and typically for their parking, like, lighting and their wall lighting, so, but, and the trick with any lighting is to, you can't just go out there with a, like a meter and, and, because you're getting light sources from everywhere, so you're not necessarily isolating the sign to know that, yeah, there's a glare here and it's definitely coming from the sign. So you really have to do it through, like, an engineering analysis that isolates, you know, those lights and does the study of what their spray is and all that stuff. It's just not something that's usually required for a signage application, but we could start looking into, you know, how we could apply those standards. And like I said before, we typically just work with applicants, and I don't, in, in my time here, I haven't run into anyone where, you know, they've been, they've pushed back on us telling them that their, their lights were too bright and they needed to reduce sign, you know, their, their wattage or whatever. We've, we've come to an agreement, so, but it hasn't happened that often either, so.
Yep.
And just another comment. I'd like to agree with you regarding getting rid of the ambiguity around the times that these signs can be illuminated. I think that, you know, leaving that unchecked is, you know, setting us up for something else down the road. So I, I really want some clarification on that and some parameters there for that.
Okay. So I'm hearing, so requirements that we're expecting dusk, dusk to close and no, and not lit during the day, right? So that's, that's a given. So they, the lights, lights can be lit from dusk until half an hour. They're asking for 30 minutes after closure. Okay.
After, after the closure of the business.
Of each business, yeah. Yeah, so the business closes at seven, you know, I mean, there's going to be a big portion of the year when you're sitting outside, these lights are not going to be in effect.
Right. Sunday night at 8:30, nine o'clock.
Yeah, this time of year through, you know, potentially through...
March.
Yeah, through March, then you may have days that you're sitting out on your deck and the lights are going to be on, but... I think from, from a, I mean, we, we have enough of us that are concerned about the north and east signage being lit. I'm not getting the sense we want to put a, you know, we're not asking the applicant not to do that, but I think we want to pass along to the town board that that's a deep concern for us. Is there for a number of us, I guess? Is that...
Yeah, I guess I'm not for it at all. I mean, I'm not for the tenant signs, so...
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I don't even think that if they weren't lit, I just don't see the purpose for them there. I just don't, I envision, I think you put it really well, and I appreciate what you looked at when you went and talked to the Broomfield, because I think that's some really good insight as to why people aren't doing it all on there, and people don't allow it. For us to start allowing, having tenant signs on all that, I just think we set a precedent for things that we shouldn't. So, so I'm not for the tenant signs on the east and the north.
So that, you know, that'll come into play here, so I think there are at least a few of us who would be in support of that, but I think there are also others who don't have a problem with it, so.
I'm not for the talent. I wouldn't mind if they were unlit signs, which would get them eight hours of daylight and people wouldn't be able to see them in the dark. That would, that would bother me a lot less. If the signs on the north and east were unlit signs, so that you could see them during the day, which will be all day during the summer and eight hours out of 10 in the winter.
How are you with that? Or do you just still know signs on the east?
I just don't like, I don't like the precedent of putting advertising on buildings along that, you know, to start that precedent of doing it. No one else has done it. I don't know why we need to do it, and, yeah, I, I just think, I think the signage on the, on the north and the west is, is crucial to people finding it. I think about driving in there, the first time I drove in, I, I couldn't figure out who was there or what that building was either, so...
Houston.
On the west and the north side.
West.
Oh, excuse me, west and south side, sorry.
West and south.
Yeah, and so I think those, the tenant signs, I think the signage on the building is good, but to me, having the additional signage on the parking garage, I, I just doesn't, don't see the...
Can you bring up the east and north elevations, if you mind?
So the parking garage, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, parking garage, right?
Yeah. So that's the east elevation of the parking garage, and that's the north.
And I do continue to get confused with the diagonal of 36, which is east and which is north. Can you help?
Yeah.
I just, I just struggle with it.
So east, right here.
Yeah, and that's the one that, those are the ones that are facing directly over to...
So on this corner right now, you have the VCH sign facing north, and you have the urgent care sign facing east, and that's what you see.
And so you have a problem with north as well, so people coming south?
I think so, because if we go to the north, can you go to the north building sign, please?
No, on the garage.
No, I know, I go to the north building just to point something out, if I'm, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but there's going to be a tenant sign on that north.
On the north building. One, one?
One.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you be more inclined to have more than one on the north side of that building rather than on the parking garage, or?
I think it's a better spot for it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that gets people going south on 36, visibility to that building.
Yeah.
And then on the parking garage, can we go to the parking garage? I'm struggling with, yeah, with what's visible with the building in front of it. It's hard to tell.
Yeah, and I, I don't know either. Yeah, I don't know if you'd be able to see that either, and especially when things get, I think the thing we didn't talk about is there's going to be other buildings being built up...
Oh, sure.
To the west of that building, and will it impact? I don't, I don't know how far, and...
No, I don't think so.
To the west of the...
To the north. I don't think anything will be built to the north of the parking garage.
No, to the, to the west.
To the west of, yes, certainly to the west.
Well, we have the sports table to the south, I guess, and then west. Yeah, to the west, for sure. Yes, yes, absolutely.
I think you can bring it up, but evidently the building's not there.
No, I know. That's been the struggle without the building there. Yeah, yeah, no, understood.
Because it's, things will be built right across the street.
Oh, it's there. Well, at least the sports table's there.
Yeah.
So this is the location of the, the parking garage, and then, and I think I had some images in my presentation of this. Maybe that were better.
But in that vision right there, right in front of us, to the right of the building, there's going to be building, there's going to be building...
To the right of here?
Yeah.
No, there's, that's the furthest north, this, this far east that any of the buildings go. So we're going to look at the presentation again, or if we were to go to, that's the wrong one. If we were to go down. So this is the last block on this side of Superior Drive that's, that's built.
That's built across the...
No, this is the lift station here, and then this is the start of Park Two. And I did, I mean, some of you emailed me earlier in the week and, you know, asked for context of what was approved, you know, signage wise for other buildings in the area. We can go through that stuff as well, if it would help. If there's, yeah, if you have it and there's allowances for things currently, like, we're considering? They're all different uses, but we have, and this was a while ago, but when the Boulder Valley Ice Building got approved, this is the, so this is the west elevation, so this is facing back, back towards McAsland. This is the north elevation. As far as their signage allowances, the locations and the sizes are identified here. So that's west and that's north. And then facing to the east, they have 90-square-foot sign, one of the three 60-square-foot signs is where the Floyd sign is now. There's two more 60-square-foot signs that were approved here, and then the 75-square-foot sign, a little further north. And then south, they have these signage allowances. So that's the, the sports table, and then more recently, and some of you were a part of the review for the Elman Hotel. Elman Hotel is, you know, bigger in size, four stories, but the, the signage that was approved was roughly 80 square feet in size. There's one that's slightly larger just because the orientation is different. They have the, their logo on top and then the lettering below, so this one's 105 square feet. But this is considered retail, and the retail allowance is largely different from what the office allowance is. And so when we go into the, the language for retail, it's one square foot of signage for every, like, linear foot of building frontage, and we never, ever get that, which is a good thing. So these are, I mean, basically, when we do a review or when I do a review, it's kind of proportionality, you know, for this type of thing, and no one's really come in with such an obnoxious sign that I've had to, you know, cut them down a ways. But, you know, I, so, but, you know, my reviews, you know, for the town center are kind of limited to the medical office building, and we can kind of go through that approval as well. But, and the parking or the hotel, as well as CenterPoint. CenterPoint's got four signs on each of their tenants, and they, CenterPoint being where the Starbucks is, they each have 25, 20, like, 22 and a half square feet of, and that's based on their kind of small frontage for each of their units. But the retail sign's much bigger. The office allowances are listed here, and it's, it was 25 square feet, and it's kind of really intended to be over the building entrance, and, and like what we have in a lot of, you know, the design guidelines, you know, this was kind of envisioned as a mixed-use area where everyone's kind of walking in off the street, and you have a multi-use building. In that kind of instance, 25 square feet above an entrance when you're walking down Main Street is plenty. That's comparable to what you have for Starbucks across the street. But when you have a multi-tenant user along a highway, it's a different, you know, we, that's how the board considered it when it came in originally, and, and they even talked to the applicant about signage and lighting and, and standards, but the tenant, they only had two tenants at the time when the MLV was originally approved. But I don't recall their lighting for all-night being a request at the original hearing. I think that was part of the discussion. That happened with the board, but I didn't go back and listen to those minutes. That's just my recollection, was that they ask, "Well, we'd love to have the urgent care here. How long is it actually going to be operable, and when do you need your, your signage lit?" So, and that's kind of the same precedent that was established, so for, you know, there was, I understand Ben's point. It's not, and it was something that was kind of brought up in the staff memo at the time, was that, you know, these were, you know, these are associated with, with the medical office building. They, they basically have the right to use the parking garage. They're kind of the primary user. They get like 75% of the parking spaces during normal business hours, and then it's a shared parking environment. So that's why the, these lights don't go off, you know, when the urgent care closes. It's because the sports table's open and has hockey till, I think, 2 o'clock in the morning. And so, you know, and this may not be used excessively now, but as, you know, the stuff in the front of the building isn't there, and we're relying on on-street parking to park the sports table as these blocks develop, then more and more people are going to be using the parking garage to those later hours, and that is going to be the safer spot, probably than, you know, parking along the street. So that's a little bit of the context. So the, the sports table itself is entitled to a few more lit signs that are currently there, right?
Several more lit signs.
Several more, yeah. Okay.
Well, other tenants have any interest in signage on the garage? Not of the building, but of the...
They would have to come back through the same process, so, I mean, it hasn't been contemplated for any other tenants besides the medical office building, and that's kind of, I mean, these applications for both the medical office building and the parking garage were processed at the same time as one FDP, so that's kind of why it got considered as it was. And if you look at the, you know, we showed it, I think, in the last proposal, but I think I took it off this slide, for this one was that, you know, you don't have an east facade for the medical office building because it's blocked. You do, but it's 10 feet away from the parking garage, so there's no point in having any signage on it.
So, you know, if our main concern is the amount of light that's coming off of those signs that are in the garage because they're backlit, I think that we heard that there might be some alternatives in terms of not using white signs there and maybe trying to get away from or reduce some of the, the light that comes off of those signs. I mean, if that's our main... I mean, if that's our main concern, um, you know, in terms of, uh, us thinking about this being a billboard for tenants, I don't, I really don't think that we can go in that direction. I think that we need to really kind of look at this more as a branding for this building and, um, for the tenants that are there. Um, you know, I had a conversation over the weekend, and, um, I was talking with, uh, some entrepreneurs that brought in a new business, Superior, and they were talking about signage, and, um, more importantly, the investment that they've made in our community. Um, and I think we see a very large investment made here, um, in our community, and, um, if, you know, they need a little bit of signage, I, I think that, um, you know, as long as it fits with, um, um, what we'd like to have our, our standards are, then, um, I think we should move forward with that. Keep it in mind that we really do want to be sensitive to our neighbors and, um, not kind of blind them, but, and once again, I think we might be able to accomplish that by, um, requiring that they not use, um, white signs on that, um, facade, just a thought.
Well, I'm definitely struggling with, with where to go, I don't know if anybody wants to, to, you know, start, start talking about what, what a motion might look like. I mean, I think we have, uh, a lot of us have an issue with the east facing signs, period, some with them being lit, um, some a little bit to the north, I'm a little less concerned, I think, about the north than the east. We're, we're on consensus with, um, the timing that the lights are on, um, and the desire to manage the brightness if there, if there's an issue. And if anybody have any thoughts on it?
I'm, I'm good with the recommendation that the lights go off thirty minutes after the business is closed.
Yeah, we're all good there. Yeah, we're good on that one.
It could be a recommendation.
It's the east-facing and north-facing signs that were, you know, that there's concern and some conflict on. And, you know, I mean, I think all of us want to provide the signage, just a question of can we come to an agreement on the lighting and... I like the idea of no wa, you know, the, the idea of no white, like, that's a struggle if, if, if that's the logo, right? So Touchstones isn't, you know, it's yellow and red, and it probably won't be that distracting. But if somebody comes in and, you know, they're red and white, that might be, you know, might not be willing to, to change their colors to something else, so, but I like the idea of no white, so...
Yeah, just a thought. And maybe, you know, the, um, owner can say, "Well, I understand your sign is red and white, however, we don't have approval for a sign that's red and white."
Well, I mean, any other piece too, is, is how, how often are these gonna be lit, and how distracting are they gonna be, at what time of the day, and, you know, it's, can we, are, are we, what, are we concerned about the, what are we here, September through March timeframe? When these will be lit and facing east? I, I am struggling with east, you know, the east-facing signs, but, and the volume, and we're going from one to five, I think, or one to four now, right? They reduced it to four? Sorry.
It's, uh, four total with one downlit sign that, you know, labels a building, and then three tenant signs.
Currently only one's, one is permitted, right? That's existing, what's, what's approved again, east?
Uh, just the one, so it's what's shown here.
Just one's approved.
One here on the east, and then two on the...
You're asking for the three tenant, just the three tenant signs now, right?
Yeah, I mean, in...
Been reduced to two, that's, that's...
No, I think it went from...
One on the north side has been reduced to two requests, because they already have two approved, and then the east side is a request for three, because they already have one approved, but the total at the end of the day would be...
Four.
One, four on each elevation, three tenant signs, and one medical center sign. So...
Yeah.
As opposed to six?
Or five? Five is what was approved.
As opposed to four tenant signs previously, so it goes from four to three on each elevation to this proposal, yeah. It's a twenty-five...
And they're smaller, right? I mean, let's not forget, we've gone from eighty square feet to sixty square feet, so...
So there are a lot of variables, I understand, and it's tricky, especially when you're dealing with stuff that's, uh, already out there, and, you know, you kind of have a precedence at, to some degree, but, um, you know, if, if you're considering, if your biggest concern's the east elevation, you could consider, you know, seeing if they're amenable to shifting their location to the, the north side, you know, they could get the same amount of signage by adding two additional signs on, uh, their north garage elevation, or sharing one with the north garage elevation, and then one on the, um, the actual north elevation of the medical center, um, if that's the, the main concern.
But that requires reopening the public hearing, getting in conversation, that may...
Well, you could, you could recommend anything you want, you want them to consider at the, the town board meeting, you know?
And that's why I was trying to differentiate between what we actually want to write into this as a requirement, you know, in our approval versus, you know, recommendations based on our concern.
I, I would find the north elevation, the west side of the north elevation, which is, would be under the Superior Medical Center, uh, less obtrusive or less, I'm not quite sure what my word is, than the east face of the building. I don't know, I mean, just looking at it, I would expect from, uh, medical office buildings' point of view that the north face is more useful to than the east face, uh, but I don't know if that's true or not.
I suspect if we, we had a motion that, that, to approve these with the ability to work with them on the, the brightness, the dust to close, and recommendations of the town board about our concern regarding the east elevation, and, you know, I mean, they can listen to the meeting, I, I don't know if we have full support for north elevation issues, there's at least three of us. Were you concerned about the north elevation?
I'm, I'm a little more conflicted now, I, I mean, in my black and white mind, I can still draw the line of this, the parking garage is off-premise, and we, no one around here has been doing off-premise signs, but on the other hand, having seen how many lit signs we're gonna have on the elevation of a sports table, I could see focusing our, it's more, better use of our time to focus our energies on the quality of the light along that entire frontage, although it's probably too late on, on the sports table, to make sure they're just not overly bright, overly onerous.
We could, I'm, I'm sure staff's listening, and they'll be thoughtful about some of the things we're concerned about when, when additional light signage comes forward, but to them. But you're right, yeah, that won't come before us, so... So, anybody want to take a stab at a motion? See where it goes? Got his chair, I got to push that off on somebody else, but if I need to do it, I can.
Supposed to push it off on Lisa.
That's right, Lisa, will you take it?
So, just for my clarification, what is our understanding regarding the north and east elevation, or the north elevation?
Well, my, I mean, this is where we probably have to, and I don't know if we want to straw pull it before we do this, but, I mean, to me, it's more of a recommendation, or it's more of a, rather than writing it into the, uh...
Rather than a condition, it's a recommendation?
Yeah, we, we just make a recommendation to...
Board?
That the board can, consider that there's deep concern with the east elevation being lit, and in some cases, signage at all.
I mean, they, they heard the last meeting, they heard the residents from Lewisville at the last meeting, like we all did, like they, Mr. Rosenfeld did. So, I mean, they, they, they're aware of the concern of the elimination of these signs.
Yeah.
We weren't able to do anything about it on the sports table, unfortunately, but, um, you know, Mr. Rosenfeld heard us and has come back with a new design. I, I think it's a pretty good compromise for, for them and for us. You know, setting precedent as we go down the road, I, I'd be happy to put my foot down on other things down the road, absolutely. This, this building next to the sports table, I think, is highly, highly important.
So is the four-story that goes downtown, two years from now.
True, or, you know, what if they build a hotel across the street? Right, what if they build a hotel across the street and the lights are blaring on the hotel?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
I, I could probably get behind the, the east, you know, I, maybe what you were saying is moving it off of the east, onto the north to some degree, or maybe not moving, having, again, I don't, still don't like the billboard of tenants on a thing, so maybe it's not moving four of them, maybe it's moving, or moving two of them, maybe it's moving one of the two over there and having three or something, or...
Yeah, trying to micromanage what they think, what we think they should or shouldn't do versus, look, we have a problem with this face for this reason, you know?
But that's why I think I wouldn't, I mean, to me, to get behind the proposal, i- if we said nothing on the east and figure out the north, or whatever, I'd be behind, I could get behind that.
And is that to the point of putting that in the resolution, or letting it pass with them on there and suggesting to the town board in a separate recommendation that they not do that? I mean, that, that's the thing, 'cause I don't know what, yeah, I'm not sure what's gonna...
Well, ours are nine, non, I mean, I, I laugh a little bit at what we do here, because it's just a recommendation, no matter what, we're not approving anything, so whether it's a recommendation that's outside of this, it seems like they're the same thing to me, to the board.
To some degree, I mean, it truly, if you, if you, if you want to put forward a motion that eliminates the east side and it passes, that's gonna be more significant than us passing it as is and saying, hey, by the way, a few of us are concerned about this, right? That's, that's gonna, it's gonna carry more weight, there's no question.
For clarity, I would, I mean, I'd accept a downlit Superior Medical Center sign on the east.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're all okay with that. It's the tenant signs that we're concerned about.
Maybe we could make a resolution that says, uh, that we accept a proposal that's been put forward, subject to the two future tenant signs that are currently showing on the east side of the building, east side of the garage, being moved to the north side of the garage.
But then you're sitting here assuming that they care, right? That that's what they want, and I don't, I, I can't, I can't do that, because I don't, I don't know whether that's meaningful to them or not, right? I, I can say, "No, I don't want them on the east," if they want to come back to the board and say, "No," to the, to the applicant. I mean, we don't, we don't know that. I could reopen it, and we could have that conversation, but, you know what I mean?
I think it's a fair condition, if that's the condition you guys are comfortable with.
Yeah, if the condition is we don't want it facing east, then let's just say we don't want it facing east.
And let them come to the board?
Yeah, if they want to come to the board and say, "Yeah, we, we'll put them over on the north side," that, or we'd rather, no, can we get more on the west side, or can we, or whatever, right?
I'm just trying to figure out how to move this forward.
I think that's a good, I think just saying, remove them from the east and don't micromanage, I think you're saying, don't micromanage.
Yeah, just don't micromanage where they might go, because that's our concern.
I'm sure they know more about it.
And I don't know if that's gonna pass, we can, I mean, you know, we're gonna make a motion and see where it goes, we can always make another one, right? If that doesn't pass...
Then I think we need to say something about the light intensity, uh, and the, the timeframe, the dusk to, the dusk to dark, or, or, I don't know what that was phrase.
Yeah, yes, I'd like to include that.
It's, and I'll clarify that, I mean, unless you want to add the dusk issue, like, I mean, they're basically offering it, so we, we would update their plans, um, to clarify that it's not in the morning, that it's, it's from dusk to dawn, rather than...
From dusk to dawn, yes.
Half an hour before business opens and half an hour business close, but the way it's shown on their site plans isn't how, so, um, the applicant tried to clarify just the hours that it would actually be to, to clarify the overall impact, but it's written on their FTP sheets as, as turning off within half an hour of business closure. So if you want to add the piece, all you're really needing to add is that it's, that we clarify that it don't, it doesn't even come on until dusk.
Yeah, lights can't, okay, so all we have to do is, okay, so it's just, okay, lights on at dusk, okay, is there already, they're already...
They're already being shut off half an hour after, I mean, that's...
By requirement? But not by requirement?
It's by requirement, it's, that's in the, the design guidelines, so they're following the design guidelines, but we also put that on the sheet so that any future tenant who looks at, you know, these plans or whatever is part of their, um...
Okay, and so clarifying what, and so, just getting motions and approvals and votes understood, so if we, if a motion is, is made to recommend approval based on these conditions and it doesn't pass, then another motion can be made, and we can keep doing that until we come up with something that works, right? So, okay, and, and, or if we get there, we may end up just having to, you know, deny it, you know, if that's, make a recommendation to deny it, that's where we're all at, I'm not sure what's gonna pass, but, um, I think at this point, what I'm hearing is worth at least trying for is, is that we, um, one of the conditions is no, no signage on the east elevation?
No tenants.
No tenant signs, sorry, no tenant signs on the east elevation, that lights can only come on at dusk, but we already know they're already required to go off at closing, so, and then, I'm, I'm not sure how to handle this, um, this piece about the brightness of the signs and our ability for the town to work with a tenant to deal with that if it comes up. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I mean, you could, you could couch it as, you know, applicant will endeavor to work with, um, with planning, you know, in an effort to, you know, come into compliance with, with lighting standards, or something along those lines, you know what I mean?
It's such a subjective thing, though, right?
The applicant's already agreed on record to, to work with planning and building for the urgent care sign, and then I think that we just, you know, you've clarified to me that we'll need to be a little bit more, uh, dogmatic about getting something that clarifies how bright these signs are gonna be before we, we go, they go up, and they do have to come back for a sign permit afterwards, so, it seems like that's on staff.
I think that, yeah.
As much as I don't want it to be.
No, understood, and I mean, I'm willing, I'm willing to take that off the, you know, I mean, we might want to just take that off of the, the resolution and make that a staff requirement, but I think as big as this is gonna get, and as many, hopefully as many buildings are gonna come into that area, that, that we're gonna have to deal with the, with the brightness of signs and, and be a little more strict about where they go and how bright they are, okay? Is everybody comfortable with that, that, that's a staff?
I am.
Yeah, we'll make that a staff, staff.
I am.
Okay. Okay, so then all we're dealing with then is the, the, no, no tenant signs on the east elevation, and, uh, lights, uh, can only come on, the lit signs can only come on at dusk, right? They can't be lit during the day. I think that's all we've got for our conditions at this point, in our... You're right in the way there. Mr. Malia, do you want to take a stab at this? Do you have the resolution?
He's got it up.
Oh, good, okay, excellent idea.
He's all set.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
I'm not in favor of the no tenant signs on the east elevation. I like the proposal the way it is, but to move this forward, I will go along with whatever, because we have to get this forward.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know there's some, there are, I mean, we're not all, we don't have a hundred percent in favor of no east elevation, I just think that it might not go if we don't put that in, but that's, yes, I hear you. Commissioner Stewart, you have?
Yeah, I would just say, keep in mind that this is a recommendation to the board, and that we're, you know, that we're really clear on that, because I, I agree with Phyllis, I, I think that, um, what's been proposed tonight is, um, in my opinion, acceptable in that, you know, we should move forward with it, with, you know, just clarification of a couple of things, like, uh, that when the signings are on and things like that, but, so...
All right.
So, Commissioner McCool, these extra, these two items are recommendations?
They are conditions to...
They're conditions.
They are conditions in the resolutions.
After I read through the, the motion...
It'd be with the following conditions.
Right, with the, with the following additional, uh, conditions.
Yeah, there are some conditions, um, already in here, right, with...
That's right.
Did we get those in, in here?
A and B, yeah, they should still be there.
Okay, yes, yeah, so we've got A and B now, you've got down at the bottom, the, the minor technical and red line corrections are a condition, um, and the submission of a full and comprehensive FTP supplemental plan are, are conditions, and we're adding, if you want to, you're making the motion, but two conditions, which were, um, lights off, or lights can only come on at dusk, and no tenant signs on the east elevation.
Correct.
That's, those are the two that are up, up for... Those are the two that are up for discussion.
So that would be C and D under section two?
Yeah, the additional conditions, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of the planning commission of the town of Superior, recommending approval of an amendment to the Superior Town Center Final Development Plan for the Superior Medical Office Building and Parking Garage, lots 1A and 1B, block 12, town of Superior, or excuse me, Superior Town Center, case number FDP dash 2018 dash 04.
It's resolution number PC dash nine?
Nine.
Yeah, and at the very top.
Resolution number PC dash nine, series 2018.
Correct. Okay, we have a, with the following conditions?
With the following conditions.
Or additional, are they additional additions? In addition?
You could just point out as drafted with the following additional conditions.
As drafted with the following additional conditions. Item C would be that recommendation, no, condition.
Right, condition.
That the tenant signs be removed from the east elevation of the parking garage. And secondly, the illumination of these signs shall be illuminated at dusk until 30 minutes after closing business.
And we just need only at dusk? We've already got, the closure is already built.
Yeah, the only thing I guess I'd ask for clarification there, I'm sorry to throw a wrench in here at the 11th hour, is that applicable to all the signs or just the tenant signs? Do you want the Superior Medical sign? No, for the, for the lighting limitation on, at dusk.
The illumination of the dusk.
Between the two signs and the Superior Medical Center sign that's downlit and the internally illuminated signs?
Oh, that's a great question. So, all right, we have a motion on the table. I don't know if we even have a second yet. We could have discussion and alter that if we need, or do we need?
I mean, you can, you can...
Can we talk about this right now? Okay, so...
You can restate the motion.
Okay. All right, so...
Sorry.
No, no, understood. Yeah, definitely, I get it. I'm, I am less concerned about the downlit sign, but I don't...
As am I. I'm more concerned about the tenant signs. The downlit signs I'm okay with.
Are you okay just leaving them on?
I agree with that.
How are they now? I thought you said they were, so they're permitted to be on 24/7, the back?
They could be anything. I mean, it's just a matter of whether or not you want to have as restrictive of conditions, but...
What are they now?
I believe he's proposing to turn them off after hours, which is, which is fine.
Yeah, that's cool. If he's proposing to do that, that's awesome. Yeah. Okay. I don't think we're, okay, I'd say also, yeah, all the lit signs, if they're comfortable with that, then...
All the lit signs?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm less concerned about the back, but yes, that'd be great. So, could you have a?
No. I would suggest a slight, I'd say no, sorry.
I'd suggest that a slight edit and suggest no earlier than dusk for lit signage. Because if you say this shall be lit at dusk...
Oh, no early?
You're telling them they have to be lit and they might not want to light a certain sign.
Do you want to amend that? Or are you comfortable amending that to, no earlier than, no earlier than dusk, that was you said? So amend it to the motion that... Do you want us to restate the whole thing or we?
Um, yeah, why don't you just...
Just go ahead and...
Just so we have it on the record, so it's clear.
At the beginning, you have resolution number PC dash nine, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, just go for it again.
Thank you. The town of Superior Planning Commission in regards to resolution number PC dash nine, series 2018. This is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the town of Superior, recommending approval of an amendment to the Superior Town Center Final Development Plan for the Superior Medical Office Building and Parking Garage, lots 1A and 1B, block 12, Superior Town Center, case number FDP dash 2018 dash two, dash 04. With additional conditions under section two, item C shall be the condition of removing all tenant signage from the east elevation of the parking garage. And item D would be... That the tenant lighting, the tenant signage...
All, all.
All lighting, all lighting, shall be eliminated no earlier than dusk and for 30 minutes after their business is closed.
All right, we have a motion on the table. From Commissioner Malia. Okay, second from Commissioner Harper. Call in favor?
Discussion, I just want to...
Or discussion, sorry.
I just want to reiterate, I'm not for C, but I will go along with it just to move it forward.
All in favor? I have, I'll bet you none of us. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Still? Still one nothing? We didn't miss a thing. Thank you, Michael. I don't see anything else on here, but, oh, I'm sorry, we do, I just wrote all over, staff and out, staff and out.
Two signs to these things now. So we'll have a PC meeting on October 16th, our normal meeting. And at that meeting, there's no development application. We'll just be hearing from our consultants on the northwest Superior Study Update. And then following that meeting, so this is kind of, that meeting's in order to prepare and kind of clarify what we're going to be going over on October 29th with the original town residents. That meeting's scheduled for 6:30. And the November 13th meeting is scheduled for a lunchtime meeting with, and it's more focused on the Superior Marketplace. That'll be open to the public, but we'll do an extra, you know, effort to reach out to the stakeholders at the marketplace to get them there over their lunch hour. So, those are the dates. I'll have Emily or myself, we'll send out just some calendar reminders for you guys so you can add that to your calendar. But for the October 29th and the November 13th meeting, since they're different times and different dates than we're used to, the 29th is a Monday and I believe the 13th is a Tuesday, but I...
It is, it is a Tuesday.
Wow. I still have some, some bit of memory, that's good. That's it.
Is there going to be results from the traffic analysis on October 16th?
Yeah, we're actually going back and forth on different studies right now with consultants for the traffic LSE and trying to figure out what the best solution is for the marketplace. And it's been an effort, more of an effort than I thought, or more complicated than I understood, so.
And since we're on signage, I, we think two new signs have gone up, Kumon and, well, the new Wack, Wick, whatever that is.
Wax Studio, yeah.
Yeah, we can't tell whether they are looking like they're wanting to be lit. We haven't looked at them at night, but I, I understand it.
It hasn't been lit yet.
Yeah, my understanding is that that section is not permitted to have lit signs facing our neighborhood.
Oh, very good thing.
I am hoping that's still true. I know the section down below where Whole Foods was, something got approved and got by me, we didn't see it, but that annoyed me. I didn't think we were supposed to have any lit signs facing, facing town, but just want to make sure...
Yeah, I looked, I'll double check those signs. Kumon sign was already up.
It's been up, yeah, I guess, but it's never been lit, right? And then the way...
The nails sign has never been lit either, you know, the nails.
Well, it was for a while.
They put up, you know, lit signs.
They were doing some, that got turned off, though, right? The neon?
Yeah, I believe so. I haven't been out there and I haven't been out.
All the wax.
So you'll notice it more probably than we will.
Yeah, well, because I work straight across it, but I, I looked out last night and that's a night actually to see if the wax sign was lit. The wax sign hasn't been lit. You actually, I was, I mean, I didn't know about this rule that you can't light those signs, which I must say I'm very pleased to hear about, so.
I'll double check. I can't remember off the top of my head whether or not they're not lit or if they have the same kind of business hours limitation signs.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll go with my recollection. I'll go dig it out, but that, it got, it got approved in that one, but not in the section down by Whole Foods. Those are, those, that condition got lifted and either Daryl and I were...
For Sycamore?
Yeah, you know, the Pera and the mattress place and all those things.
Oh, okay, yes, no, they're all lit.
Yeah, they are, because Daryl and I must have been snoozing when that got through because that was, that slipped by us. We didn't, we didn't know that that change got made, but the upper section was...
Further west.
No lit signs, yeah, facing, facing the neighborhood, so. But, but yeah, if you want to dig that out for it, but...
I'll try.
If it becomes an issue, then we'll dig it out.
Please discourage the wax.
Exactly. All right, anything else? All right, go Rockies.
Go Rockies.
Because as you said that, it comes...